To order, it's Tuesday, October 13th. We will begin with the invocation given by Pastor Catherine Neely Burton of Grace Presbyterian Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. We'd ask that you stand if you are able and willing. Good morning, Pastor.
Good morning. This morning, I'm going to share a prayer that is attributed to Augustin of Hippo, and I will add my own prayer to the end. Let us pray. God of life, there are days when the burdens we carry are heavy on our shoulders and weigh us down, when the road seems dreary and endless, the skies gray and threatening, when our lives have no music in them, and our hearts are lonely, and our souls have lost their courage. Flood the path with light, turn our eyes to where the skies are full of promise, tune our hearts to brave music, give us the sense of comradeship with heroes and saints of every age, and so quicken our spirits that we may be able to encourage the souls of all who journey with us on the road of life to your honor and glory. Lord, guide these city council leaders, guard them from evil, and grant them your wisdom. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next item on the agenda is the approval of amendments in a regular meeting of October 6th. Has every member had a chance to review the minutes? Is there any discussion on the minutes? If there is no discussion on the minutes nor proposed amendments to the minutes, then I will make a motion that we accept the minutes as printed.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded by the Vice Mayor. There's no discussion on said motion, Clerk will open her roll, members will cast their votes.
Councilmember Bluebog, would you cast your vote, please?
Trying to get signed in.
Oh, okay. Would you like me to cast it for you?
Yep.
We should do all the votes with like an emperor's thumb, if they're up or down. There we go. All right, with the result of seven yays to zero nays, the motion does pass. Bring us into the next section on our agenda, which is the award section, which is really pretty cool. So, for the city of Wichita, we received the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award from the Government Finance Officers Association for the 32nd consecutive year for the 2020 adopted budget. The budget receives special performance measures recognition for the eighth time. The criteria for the distinguished budget award are based on budget documents serving four purposes: as a financial plan, policy document, operations guide, and communication device. Each year, the budget is reviewed by peers to ensure that these standards continue to be met. So with that, I have a plaque I'd like to present to our budget staff. Sorry, I thought I had the name.
Elizabeth Gold.
Elizabeth, yeah, I wasn't sure if it was Elizabeth or... Elizabeth, if you'd come down, that would be great. Thank you, Elizabeth, for all your work and the work that your department does. Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda items 1 through 16.
Does every member have a chance to review the consent agenda? And if so, is there any discussion on the consent agenda items? If there is no discussion on the consent agenda items, I will make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as printed.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded by the Vice Mayor. There's no discussion on the motion, members will cast their vote. With the result of seven yays to zero nays, the motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Reported Board of Bids and Contracts dated October 12th, 2020.
Good morning, and welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Hannah Lane Department of Finance, here to present the October 12th Board of Bids recommendations. First engineering bid we have is 2020 sanitary sewer rehab Phase C. Recommendation is municipal pipe tool for $217,868.40. Water sampling stations defer to October 19th Board of Bids. Water distribution system to serve Willow Creek East Fourth Edition Apex Escavating for Group 1 and Group 2 for an aggregate total of $107,656.20. Water distribution system to serve Edgewater Third and Fourth Editions, NOWAT construction for Groups 1 through 4 for an aggregate total of $199,254. Upper Levvy C Tow Drain Replacement Phase 1, Denton Construction and Plumbing, $304,799.25. Waterline improvements to serve Turkey Creek Third and Fourth Editions, Mies Construction, Groups 1 through 7, aggregate total of $2,378,287.25. Water main extensions on Kellogg and 135th, NOWAT construction Groups 1 and 2 for an aggregate total of $648,455. 2020 OP-3 CIP localized street and crosswalk repairs, PPJ construction for $340,825. Equus Wellfields spur line replacements MR4, Wildcat Construction, $147,629. Flagging services for crossing improvements at 17th Street, Railpro Field Services for Shelving installation at Lynnwood Library, H2I Group for $63,123.50. This is our purchasing procurement website, as well as our current open request for proposals. With that, that is our Board of Bids recommendations, and I'll stand for any questions.
Are there questions on the item? If there's no questions or discussion, I'll make a motion to accept the staff's recommended action to receive and file the report, approve the contracts, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Members will cast their vote. With the result of seven yays to zero nays, the motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Public hearing and issuance of industrial revenue bonds, IH1 LLC, for the benefit of Cosmic Pet.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council members. I'm Tim Goodpasture with the city's Office of Economic Development for the record. The item before you today is a request for the issuance of industrial revenue bonds for IH1 LLC for the benefit of Cosmic Pet. On August 13th of last year, the city council approved a letter of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed $6,100,000 and a 94% property tax abatement on a five-plus-five-year basis. IH1 has constructed a 100,000-square-foot building to be leased to Cosmic Pet, which is located at the southwest corner of MacArthur and Seneca in the Iron Horse Industrial District. The area outlined in red here is where the overall Iron Horse Manufacturing District is. The buildings in green and in yellow are the six buildings that will be built at Iron Horse. You can see the bottom right is Cosmic Pet, which was a spec industrial building, and the building above it, outlined in red that says "New," is the new additional 100,000 square feet to be leased to Cosmic Pet. This is what the facility looks like. Cosmic Pet currently employs 50 people in Wichita and plans to add at least 24 new employees over the next five years with wages in excess of $42,000 a year. Based on the capital investment in new jobs, the project qualifies for a 94% property tax abatement. A cost-benefit analysis was conducted by the Center for Economic Development and Business Research at Wichita State, which showed an overall ratio of benefits to costs to the city of 1.52 to 1, 1.3 to 1 for the city's general fund, and 1.56 to 1 for the city's debt service fund. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation that the city council close the public hearing and place on first reading the bond ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of documents for the issuance of industrial revenue bonds for IH1 LLC in an amount not to exceed $6,100,000 and authorize the necessary signatures. I would be happy to stand for any questions.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions of staff? Any discussion of this item? If there's no discussion, then I will make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to close the public hearing and place on first reading the bond ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of documents for the issuance of industrial revenue bonds for IH1 LLC in the amount not to exceed $6,100,000 and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second? Whoa, we got someone who's speaking to the motion, which will be Councilmember Bluebog.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and I just wanted to speak a little bit about this. We appreciate what they're doing down there. Originally, this building was in South Wichita. They were looking to relocate somewhere else. They decided to move into Iron Horse through our spec program, and now we're seeing that they're doubling their footprint. So we really appreciate this kind of growth, we really appreciate them staying in Wichita, and we're excited to see what happens for them in the future. Thanks, Mayor.
And I apologize, you were supposed to make the motion, and I got ahead of myself. You're at the floor, if you'd like to make the second.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded by Councilmember Bluebog, and I apologize for drifting off our standard practice here. Members will cast their votes. With the result of seven yays to zero nays, the motion does pass. And I appreciate you getting on the list so that I would make sure I could recognize you in time for that item, so thank you for that. Madam Clerk.
2021 Cultural Funding Allocation Recommendations.
Morning, sir.
Good morning, Mayor Wimble, members of Wichita City Council, Dante Martin, Assistant City Manager, here to present the 2021 cultural funding recommendations. The Cultural Funding Committee makes funding recommendations to the city council for local artists, arts, and cultural organizations. The committee is comprised of 11 members, seven appointed by the city council and four appointed by Arts Council. The cultural grant funding program includes three funding categories: an operational grants program, which provides funding for 501(c)(3) organizations in Wichita that provide arts and cultural programming; a developing arts program, which provides funding and technical assistance to small and developing 501(c)(3) organizations with annual operating budgets that do not exceed $50,000; and an artist access grant program, which is awarded to professional and emerging artists for professional development. The projected funding for 2021 for the competitive grant program was estimated at $425,000, of which the committee recommends $391,245 be allocated. The Cultural Funding Committee makes recommendations based on a competitive grant review process. Applications are evaluated based on quality of organization, financial stability, and community impact. In light of the pandemic, grant applicants were also asked to explain how the pandemic has affected their operations and what changes were being made to ensure service delivery during this funding cycle. Each organization that receives funding agrees to provide the city with services detailed in its grant application, expenditure reports, and key performance outcome data. Here's a listing of organizations that are recommended for cultural funding operational Second page of those that are recommended for cultural funding operational grants. Continued. You'll see several groups that did not apply. They're listed on the slide because they've been funded in previous years, and for various reasons, they chose not to apply for 2021 funding. We will have representatives from the funding committee, as well as Bernadette Bradshaw, who administers the process, who can answer questions related to applications. The final page of cultural funding operational grants and the grand total for this portion of the grant program, $388,395. There were two applicants for developing arts grants, the Greyle Storytelling Institute and the Wichita Jazz Festival. Funding was not recommended because the expenses that were submitted were funding for operational expenses. Developing arts grants are designated and designed for technical assistance and development, so the committee didn't believe it was appropriate to award funding for operational expenditures underneath this grant program. Lastly, we have artist access grants. There were seven applicants, and three applicants were recommended to be awarded funding totaling It is recommended that the city council approve 2021 funding allocations for arts and cultural organizations recommended by the Cultural Funding Committee. Mary Eves, who is the chair of the funding committee, Beth Oaks, who is the vice chair, and staff is available for any questions.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you very much. Not a question, more just some comments. I want to thank staff for working with this group and in this process, for sure. I think right now, during this challenging time, not only in our community and across the world, things like arts are one thing that can help us and help us to kind of have a little bit of normal and bring us back to purpose. Also, I want to make sure that we give a shout out and a thanks to the Cultural Funding Committee. Dante Martin, our Assistant City Manager, invited me to go to their first meeting and give them a little bit of my background of working with, being a grant maker and a grant seeker. I consistently say it's harder to give away money than to get or receive money, so really want to thank the committee for all their work and their time. And then just another thanks to our arts community and all of our partners in the community who applied for this funding and the contributions that they're making for our community to be a better place to live, learn, earn, play, and pray. So, thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Dante. Just question, suggestion. Are we going to reach out to the people who have historically applied, just to kind of see why they didn't? I'm just curious if COVID is a part of that, or maybe they just felt like they couldn't perform their normal services this year.
Throughout the application process, Bernadette Bradshaw works very closely with the groups that have previously applied and also those that are going through the current year's funding cycle. Bernie's available as Century 2 and may be able to weigh in as to why certain groups hadn't applied or chose not to apply this year. But to answer your question, yes, staff is actively involved in encouraging groups to continue to apply.
Okay.
Dante, just a quick question about the developing arts grants, where it seems like no one received those. Will that money just go back into the account, or will there be an effort to try to get another round of applications so that money can get back into our community?
We won't have another round of applications. The next step in this process is to begin to reach out to these groups that have been recommended for funding, finalize contracts that we'll bring back to the council in November, December. So the roughly $10,000 that remains goes back into the pot, so to speak.
Excellent. Other questions or discussion? If there's no further discussion or questions, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve funding allocations recommended for arts and cultural organizations by the Cultural Funding Committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded by the Vice Mayor. If there's no discussion on the motion, members will cast their vote. With the result of seven yays to zero nays, the motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I just wanted the council to recognize Mary Eves, who is, I think, this is her last funding round and has done a phenomenal job in the last few years of moving this forward. And I know you probably have heard the stories, I think Councilmember Plendenin especially heard the stories about what this process is like before the Cultural Funding Committee and before you got some pretty sound recommendations. So I thought you may want to recognize Mary for the work that she's done.
Of course. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Does anybody like to speak to that?
I can.
I'd love to hear kind of Plendenin's stories on this, so...
I'm not going to bore Mary with those stories, because she tells them much better than I, but it was pretty convoluted before we went through this process. And even in the early days of giving one mil, the public was just... The understanding about what arts and culture really gave back to our community was really misunderstood, and the return that we get for this investment that we make. And so, Mary has done an amazing job steering this ship, and she's going to be sorely missed if you ever see her. She's always ready for a hug and to talk about arts and culture. So I'd like to thank Mary personally and her leadership in getting this, making this such a smooth process.
Councilmember Bluebog.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and leadership's the first thing I think of when you say Mary, because even whenever her and I haven't been on the same page, she's just... She's always so sweet and so nice and just wanting to be helpful and give you the facts, so she's got big shoes to fill, so appreciate everything you've done, Mary. Thank you.
Councilmember Quikum.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to speak to Mary's leadership, and I'm not sure that people always recognize in the public just how much time these volunteers put in and the work that Mary's put in on this. She is amazing in there. She does have big shoes to fill, the next chair does, and so I want to recognize Mary and the other volunteers for the work that they've done. Thank you, Manager, for reminding us.
Other comments? See none, we'll get back to the agenda as printed. Madam Clerk.
Agreement and Funding for Traffic Signal and Overhead Sign Structures Inspection.
Onto the exciting items. Sir, the floor is yours, welcome.
Good morning, Mayor and Councilmembers. Gary Janson, Public Works Engineering. The item before you this morning is Agreement and Funding for Traffic Signal and Overhead Sign Structure Inspection. So I want to give you a little bit of background of how we got to this point on this project. In October of 2019, we received requests for qualifications for city Wichita biennial bridge inspections. As part of that, included in that proposal was a separate request for inspection of traffic signals and overhead signage structures, which I'll talk about more here in just a minute. Currently, the city's signal technicians perform visual traffic signal and overhead sign structure inspections, but only during routine inspection of other traffic signal components. The Federal Highway Administration recommends a comprehensive inspection of these facilities at least every four years. We have approximately 2,100 facilities in our inventory of varying configuration and construction located at over 600 intersections that require some level of regular inspection. Now, it's primarily for the traffic signals themselves. The overhead sign structures aren't as many, we've probably got about 20 of those, located primarily along Eisenhower Airport Parkway and at the Kellogg Interchanges. But they are still ours to maintain and do need some inspection at some point. Staff recommends following the FHWA guidelines for inspection of these vertical structures in the public right of ways in matter of public safety and for the purpose of long-term planning. Due to diminished staffing levels, increased demand on resources, and the level of structural and materials expertise required, we are unable to comprehensively evaluate these facilities and certainly not on a regular interval as recommended. During that process in 2019, the Staff Training and Selection Committee selected trans systems based on their qualifications to perform this work, should funding become available. In addition to completing structural inspection analysis of the facilities, they will work with staff to develop a plan for moving forward, including a proposed schedule for completion of all inspections, recommendations for a comprehensive maintenance and replacement plan, and estimated cost for the same. Right now, we just really don't know where we're at without moving forward with this plan. Some of the current issues we have, I'll just show you a couple of pictures. We know there's some condition issues, but not sure the severity and with how many facilities. Some of our older traffic signals, with the way they were fabricated, including non-galvanizing, are contributing to this issue, but we don't exactly know where that is at in the city at the moment. We've got a good idea of where some of the worst areas might be, and that's where we're going to focus the inspection first. Specialized equipment and training is needed to analyze conditions, both external and internal to the structures, the parts that we can't see, including measurement of section loss and predicted remaining life of the asset. And again, that's something that's just a challenge for us to do with our own staff. The cost to inspect approximately one-third of the city's traffic signal and overhead structures, including all staff-identified priority locations, is $150,000, with the option to renew for up to two years as funding becomes available. Currently, under expenditures in the Street Maintenance General Fund, operating budget are available to cover this project. With that, staff recommends that the city council approve the necessary budget adjustments, approve the agreement, authorize the necessary signature, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Questions on the item or discussion? Councilmember Quikum.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Gary, I just wanted to ask, in the agenda report, it says that they'll complete structural inspection analysis of a portion of the facilities, and I know you've told us this before, but can you remind us what, how, what portion of the facilities?
I think we can get to... We're thinking we can get to about one-third of them. So we've got about 2,100 facilities. I think we can get to one-third of them as our estimate with this cost. And I would mention again, something that I didn't mention, that if we find any significant problems, and this is really parallels what we do with our bridge inspections, anything that's a critical issue will be identified, and we'll find a way to deal with that right then, particularly through our current operating budget, so that we don't have any particularly public safety or life safety issues. But this first round, along with inspecting a third of the facilities, is to give us a better idea, really, what the overall picture looks like. And I think we can get representative samples in different areas to know just where we're at, and we don't have reason to believe that we're in a dire situation, but we really don't know yet.
Yeah, and then trans systems will lay out a plan for the remainder of how we'll inspect the remainder of those?
We will, and again, I would mention, we've got a really good program in place with our biennial bridge inspections every two years. Now, we've only got 285 bridges compared to 2,100 facilities, but we've learned a lot from that over the years in developing a long-term maintenance plan that our staff is able to carry out. If you've got a place to start and know it needs to be done annually, then we can plan ahead there to make sure that we're not getting ourselves in a bad spot or a worse spot.
Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Gary, with the facilities that we find need to be replaced, are we going to like scrap that metal and use some revenues from that to offset the cost?
It's possible, sure. The... It depends on what we find the issue is. We do have... We try to do what we can. It's not really easy to repair some of those facilities, depending on what the issue is, but we do. I can't tell you that that necessarily goes directly to offsetting that cost, but we do what we can with the scrap materials. So, but again, we'll have to just figure out... We're hoping that we can repair it in place, if possible, but I do suspect we're going to find some that need to be replaced, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Other discussion on this item? See none. If there's no further discussion, I'll make a motion that we accept staff's recommended action to approve the necessary budget adjustments, approve the agreement, authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded by the Vice Mayor. If there's no discussion on the motion, members will cast their vote. With the result of seven yays to zero nays, the motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Zone 2020-27, city zone change from single-family residential to two-family residential on property located on the north side of West Dallas Street, generally located 1,600 feet west of South Seneca Street and 1,475 feet south of West Pawnee, 1602 West Dallas.
Welcome.
Good morning. Scott Wadele from the Planning Department. And this item is a request for a zone change from single-family SF5 to two-family TF3 zoning. The site is, again, is generally located southwest of Pawnee and Seneca at 1602 West Dallas. The property is currently vacant. The owner is requesting the rezoning in order to build a duplex at the site. The DAB and MAPC both voted unanimously to recommend approval of the requested zoning with a protective overlay. The protective overlay includes design requirements to help any new structures better address the design and character of the surrounding properties, including the design of windows, the roof, siding, entrances, and that the garage shall not occupy more than 50% of the ground-level facade facing the street. The public hearing was held at the September 10th MAPC meeting. A valid protest petitions have been received to represent 52, over 52% of the protest have been received and represent fifty-two, over fifty-two percent of the protest area. The recommended action is identified in the staff report. It is for the city council to adopt the findings of the MAPC, approve the overlay, place the ordinance on the first reading, authorize the necessary signatures, and instruct publication of the ordinance after the second reading. With the protest, this action requires a supermajority, six of seven votes. The alternative actions are also identified in the staff report. They include options to modify the recommendations of the MAPC, which would require six of seven votes, deny the zone change, which would require five of seven votes, or to send the case back to the MAPC requiring four of seven votes. Here are some slides and maps and photos of the case. So here's the, here's the aerial. You can see the house that used to be at the site. Here's the map from the comprehensive plan showing this as residential. Here's a photo of the site. Houses nearby. And this is the protest map. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions or discussion on the item? If none, the chair will recognize Councilmember Bluebog.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And this did come in front of our DAB. It was unanimously approved at the DAB. And I have had a series of emails, I think you all have, from residents in the area concerned with the new construction, concerned that they thought that this was going to be a rental, that this was going to, already a lot of non-owner occupied people in the area. I don't know for sure that it would be a rental. I think the idea, either one, I think we need to start accepting these duplex properties because if you look at any new construction in Wichita, anything's going to cost you over two hundred thousand dollars to build a house new. And I honestly think these duplexes are going to be an opportunity to where someone will buy a half of a duplex as their first entry to homeownership. So I definitely don't want to deter that. I don't want to see the vacant lots in the area. And I want to, I think the new construction would be added to the area because this probably, area probably hasn't had any new construction in the last fifty years. With the high-class materials right now, I just, I can't imagine anyone building anything subpar. So I would like to take the recommended action to adopt the findings of the MAPC, approve the requested zone change with a protective overlay, place on ordinance for the first reading, authorize the necessary signatures, and instruct the city clerk to publish the ordinance after approval in the second reading.
I will second the motion. Is there a discussion on the motion? If there is no discussion, then clerk will open a roll. Members cast the vote. For the result of seven yays to zero nays, the motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
CON twenty twenty dash twenty-four, city conditional use to allow vehicle sales outdoor on limited commercial zone property, generally located on the south side of West Central Avenue and west of Northwest Street.
Welcome.
All right. Well, this item is a request for a conditional use, again, to allow for outdoor vehicle sales on property currently zoned LC Limited Commercial. The site is located southwest of Central and West Street at forty-two thirty-one West Central Avenue. The property is currently in use as a vehicle repair business, operating out of a one-story masonry structure with two garage door openings. Let's see if we can hit to some photos. Let's see what it looks like. There are supplementary use regulations that would apply to the conditional use. They are described in the staff report and include limits on the types of vehicles that can be sold at the site, requiring an extension or renewal after four years, and does not allow for outdoor repair or storage of salvage, and requires improvements, including lighting, fencing, signage, and more at the site. The DAB and MAPC voted unanimously to recommend approval of the requested rezoning with, of the conditional use. The public hearing was held at the September tenth MAPC meeting. No protests have been received. The recommended action is for the city council to adopt the findings of the MAPC and approve the conditional use and authorize the necessary signatures. This action requires a simple majority of four of seven votes. Alternative actions are to deny the conditional use, requires five of seven votes, or to return the case to the MAPC with four of seven votes. And here additional slides and information about the case. So again, here's the aerial. It's surrounded by a music shop to the west and I believe it's a Dollar General to the east. Future, the comprehensive plan showing it as employment. This is the site plan that was submitted by the applicant, showing how vehicles would circulate on the property and the position of the stalls that would be used for the automobile sales. Back of the site. The east side, and the rear of the site. Looking to the front of the building. And properties across the street. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Other questions or discussion on the item? If not, I will give the floor to the Vice Mayor. Oh, Councilmember Pryor.
Sorry, Mayor. I'm just confused. The green sheet says the DAB recommended denial, but then looking at the staff report from CSR Lopez, it says they made a motion to approve the staff's recommendation. Passed seven zero.
I apologize. It must be an error on our part for the staff report.
So which is it?
It would be with the notes from the DAB, from Anna Lopez.
Councilmember Quikum, I mean, Vice Mayor Quikum.
This is one of those motions that's backwards. So at the DAB, the recommendation from staff was denial. So they were approving the denial.
I got you now.
Okay. Yeah. So backward, one of those backwards.
Got it. Thank you.
Further discussion? If not, I will recognize the Vice Mayor for a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. This case did come before DAB back in July and then before the Planning Commission in September. And in September, at the Planning Commission, they put some pretty strict conditions on this. This is not a typical auto sales. This is four spots, four parking spots where they will be selling cars, and no more than four. There were no protests to this. So I'd like to move to adopt the findings of the MAPC and approve the requested conditional use subject to the nine modified conditions recommended by MAPC, including only four cars may be on display for sale at any one time.
I will second the motion. If there's no discussion on the motion, clerk will open a roll. Members will cast the votes. The result of six, seven yays to zero nays, the motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Appointments and Comments.
All right, let's do, try to do appointments first. So we need to do some housekeeping to clean up our record keeping. The Cedric County Commission nominated Ron Ryan for reappointments to Wichita Airport Authority on August twenty-first, twenty nineteen, but the council never took action. I am recommended that we retroactively reappoint Ron Ryan to the Wichita Airport Authority with his term ending March twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. In addition, I am appointing Ann Fox to the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission to fill the unexpired term of Renee Dexter. He resigned due to relocating to another city. Those are my two appointments. Are there other appointments? With none, I will make a motion to move these appointments out. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Johnson for a discussion on the motion.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. For the individual that we are taking action on now, do their votes or anything count for this last year, or? I'm just confused. If that's, if the recommendation was made in twenty nineteen and now we're taking action?
Were they illegitimate placed? That's a fun parliamentary discussion. If there was no objection to their seating and if they were appointed by one body, we would maybe be ratifying that body, but of course, I would love to hear the wise opinion of our legal counsel.
Mayor, Councilmember Jennifer McGaughey. It's my understanding he was continuing a term. It was a reappointment. I'd have to look at the bylaws and ordinances, but my presumption is that they would be, he would be continuing in a term until the term was filled. So my presumption is that the votes would be valid.
Thank you.
And really, I think this is pretty much all we could do at this point to try to correct it. So. Other discussion on, on the appointments? So motion's been made and seconded. Clerk has opened a roll. We'll go ahead and cast our votes. For the result of seven yays to zero nays, the motion does pass. And now we are into discussion. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. I just wanted to remind everyone in the community that today's the last day to be able to register to vote. And so if you haven't done that yet, hopefully you can take a few minutes out of your busy schedule and go and do that as we head into the November election. So remind everyone to register to vote.
Further discussion? If there's no further discussion, I will make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded by the Vice Mayor. If there's no discussion on said motion, members will cast the vote. The result of seven yays to zero nays, we are adjourned.